I'd like to call this order in the regular monthly meeting of the board event. And I'd like to start the tradition of reading the mission statement before we begin. Our mission is to inspire in each student of joy and passion for learning and commitment to excellence, personal integrity and social responsibility. We all rise from the [inaudible]. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we get to begin with our Avon Achievers. I'd like to invite out Noel Stern and Larry Sparks if you'd like to come forward so we can recognize Jennifer Mason and Heidi Yella.
Thank you very much. We're very honored that you gave us the blue bunting today. It's very nice of you. On behalf of the RBS community, I'm really excited this evening to share with you two really outstanding Avon Achievers in Mrs. Jen Mason and Mrs. Heidi Yella. And I'm going to speak to Heidi first. So Heidi, if you don't mind, come on up here. So Heidi is a member of our early childhood team. She is a pre-K educator in our age four classroom. And kind of by virtue of you guys being here, you probably have had a four-year-old or know what it's like to be with a four-year-old. So multiply it times 14, and that's what Heidi gets to do is have the outstanding experience of providing, really the first experience for many of our Avon students in the classroom that she works in. And we talk a lot with our teams, our teachers about how are things going? How are things going with you? And the classroom teacher that she actually works with presented to Larry and I a suggestion that Heidi is incredibly worthy of an Avon Achiever. And she described Heidi and says all things that Larry and I have seen as somebody who loves and cares for her students tremendously, pushes them forward socially and academically, is somebody who inspires a love for learning right at that young age. That's exactly what we're always hoping for. And I'd add one more thing to it. When we think about what elementary school can look like, this probably applies to all of the schools. We've been using this expression at RBS a little bit here and there where we talk about be a rubber band, not a rock. So what that means, of course, is be flexible, stretch yourself, don't be a rock. And I think Heidi is such an embodiment of being a rubber band, not a rock, and she's absolutely worthy of an Avon Achiever award. So I'm very, very pleased to have you part of our RBS team.
Congratulations, Heidi.
Thank you.
And also, a second story tonight, and it began at Bon Appetito just up Route 44. And if you ever been at Bon Appetito, a table for two is sometimes a table for 10. And I vaguely recognized John, who I knew as an outstanding educator for the middle school, and soon came to meet his lovely wife and now colleague of mine at Roaring Brook. And because my wife and all of us were teachers, the conversation that night ranged across outdoor education, everything she learned at the University of Vermont, and we started to hit it off. Well, soon enough, her program at St. Joe's led her to be under the tutelage of our third grade teacher, Renee Kurt. And she came and spent many weeks with us, and we continued to be impressed. And then it was the hiring committee, a stack of applicants, because you want to work in Avon, and she rose to the top. We continued to be impressed. As a steadfast member of the kindergarten team, and I should get you up here. Come on, Jen. And as a member of our kindergarten team, it might be her quiet leadership, her impeccable ethics, her caring approach, or her willingness to seek mutuality and compromise as she moves forward, which makes her an invaluable member of that team. Jen continues to make a positive impression. Maybe it's her community involvement, where she's been a coach of youth teams for many, many years, is a member of the land trust at a neighboring community, running the annual Moonlight Walk. And if you haven't been on it, join her for the Moonlight Walk. Well worth it. She continues to make a positive impression. This brings us to the capstone and a quick story. Now, schools celebrate a lot, and good schools celebrate even more. So it follows that Roaring Brook does a lot of celebrating, events, milestones, and one of those celebrations is the 100th day of school. After all, how perfect for five-year-olds and four-year-olds, learning to count, to apply specifically another day, another day, another day, and all those single days adding up to 100. Very sweet. And on that morning, the kids are coming off the bus clutching boxes of 100 buttons, jars of 100 marbles, bags of 100 pennies. And the teachers get into the program by dressing as centenarians. What does it look like, boys and girls, to be 100 years old? A day at a time, soon you become 100, right? Eventually, so. And one astute member of the community managed to get Jen to thinking, well, aren't those portrayals of centenarians a little bit stereotypical? Don't they look, you know, tottering and feeble and just too old? And, you know, another parent might not have been willing to ask that of a teacher, but Jen has been open to those sorts of things and invites that kind of critique and really responded by thinking about it. We don't want to have a stereotype for old folks because they're vital members of the community. And thus was born the program Calling Aunt Clara. And I had the pleasure of sitting in on a Calling Aunt Clara. We're a genuine centenarian, well, plus or minus six here, she's nine-four. So both to the five-year-olds, and what a treat that was. I hope one day to be able to speak to my own grandchildren's class about what it was like to actually roll up your windows in the car or dial a phone with a rotary dial. So her kids came away from that with an appreciation for the vitality and the contributions that a 100-year-old person can make, and not just because they look different. So for erasing stereotypes and teaching truly to the heart and soul of the matter, we can gradually trend on being an Avon achiever.
Congratulations to Jen and Heidi. Thank you so much for all you do for our students every day. This is the point where you are welcome to dismiss yourselves if you would like. If this is why you're here, we totally understand.
But Larry didn't mention, he ended up eating half of my dinner that night.
We're going there tonight, right now.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last monthly meeting that took place November 27, 2018?
Sure, move.
Houston, move. So I have a second. Laura, you want a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so that passes unanimously. The next portion of our meeting is communication from the public. We've allotted 15 minutes for that, with up to three minutes per speaker. Do I have anyone interested in coming forward?
Does it depend on the topic?
No, if you would like to speak, just come on up. We do have a different mic arrangement tonight, so you have to turn it on when you come up to the seat. Just tell us your name and market when you come up, so we can have it on the record.
Is there a topic tonight at work about the student, you know, thing from last week?
The student walkout? You can discuss anything that you want to bring to our attention.
I want to bring something up because it's not that long. Okay. I have something.
Sorry. Yeah? Push it up.
Just something quick. I just don't know if we have anything written yet, but I know there's controversy of should we have had that or not, and I was wondering if something can be put together where there's a consistent rule, like if one group wants to do something, then the other, even if it's not opinion or a completely different subject. And maybe narrowing it more down to what students put together really themselves, not just attaching them to the cocktails or something that might be national, or, you know, just different ideas like that, where I just think it could become a problem if different people are, you know, different groups or different opinions are either treated differently or given different instructions, et cetera. So that's my main thing.
Thank you, Margaret.
And Margaret Raden, 15, Old Mill Road.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, then moving on. Let's have our, you know, don't have our student recs tonight. Did we hear from them or are they not coming? I'm hearing none. Okay. And we missed out on their input. We really look forward to hearing from them. So we'll move to Heather Mashad, our fiscal affairs, our financial report.
Yes, good evening. During the month of February, we made a second payment, like I had mentioned in January, to the transportation company for $950,000. As you know, our transportation contract was pay upfront twice, and then we pay an extra payment at the end of the year. Additionally, this month, we'll be looking at all of the open purchase orders and making adjustments to them as necessary, looking forward to the end of the year and estimates for year-end invoices.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have a question for Heather? Thank you very much. Yes, now, old man Dr. Nestle Versack, would you like to give us an update?
Thank you. On February 15, the Curriculum Professional Development Council met, and at that meeting, there were three new primary instructional materials proposed, a book for eighth grade English Language Arts, and for grades 10 and 11, a finance and calculus textbook that will support the new courses that you approved earlier this year. The council is required to meet a two-thirds approval before that recommendation moves forward. That requirement was met under Board Policy 6161. We then took the new proposals to our new Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee on March 6 and did an overview of the text, and there was a motion to move them forward to the full board so that we can commence the 30-day public inspection. The books will be available to the public and board members to come in view at the annex. So I just ask for a motion to move those forward for the public review.
So do you want to make a motion?
I have a question first.
Sure.
The calculus book that you're looking to have approved, it says for ECE calculus. Is it for the course which is AP Calculus BC slash ECE? Or is it a different course, just ECE calculus?
It's for the ECE calculus course. If the enrollment is there for the course to run, this would be the book for that course.
So I'm a little confused. I didn't see in the new Course of Studies, a class that said ECE calculus. The only one I saw was the AP Calculus BC slash ECE.
It was ECE calculus one that was approved.
So it should be in our Course of Studies right now, that's published online?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't see it.
If that course is running this year, again, that's the building will put in the Course of Studies, which courses they want to run. I would need to check to see if it's there, but it was approved to run for the 18, 19 school year.
Okay. So I just want to share my same concerns I expressed at previous meetings. When we offer a subject with both an AP and the ECE, I feel that students are in a position where they're having difficulty deciding which one to take. And yesterday, I just heard a story from a student who's a senior at Avon High School, took an ECE class, actually took several ECE classes, but was just accepted into some colleges and looked to see that none of them accepted the ECE credit. So now she's in a position where, having spent the $160 to take the course, I think that's about what it costs for each of the ECE courses, is scrambling to take the AP exam and learn that material. I know when I've looked at other districts, most of them have courses where they offer ECE when it overlaps with AP. But I think it's going to be a challenge for us to continue to have both ECE calculus and AP calculus going forward, and especially, as I said before, challenging budgets. I don't want to be in a position to have to make that decision. So I'm not comfortable approving an ECE calculus book. If it's a standalone class, if it's with AP, I'm okay with it.
Any other comments about any of the three books?
Can I make a comment about the same topic? I would just further add on to that same topic about what safeguards do we have in place if there is that dual option to maybe ensure that the AP gets filled first, or the AP stays and the ECE is a secondary option, I would say.
Actually, tonight is not the approval of the text. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. It's to open the review process of the books, and then after the 30-day review is when we have the discussion of whether to approve and adopt the text. In terms of the enrollment in the courses, the enrollment is run through the courses, students sign up, and then it's the decision of which courses to run that are made here at the high school level. Because we offer many more courses in the Course of Studies than we run due to, you know, what the enrollment numbers are. So we look at those each year. We don't kind of make a blank statement of how we will fill them across the years. Any others?
Can we actually have Jay's question answered? Is this book also going to be used for AP calculus, or is it just ECE calculus?
It's for the ECE calculus course.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to start the review process for all three books.
And second?
Second.
Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jay and Bajin, any extensions?
I have the next one also. As part of the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee, one of the documents that was shared at that meeting were the courses that we've added, some changes we've made over the year, and deletion of courses from 2013 to the present, just showing kind of the evolution of how we've added courses, changed some courses, built out different areas. So within it, for example, you'll see the full-day kindergarten, where we started entering Chinese for grades K-2 in 2014, 15. If you recall, we started K-2, and at the high school level, working toward the middle. Next year, in 18, 19, we will be in sixth grade and have completed that full, actually now it's 112 Chinese opportunity for our students. You'll also notice that more electives has been put in. When we did the strategic plan for the district six years ago, there was a lot of input that we had become very academic and wanted more electives. So you'll see there's been some steady growth in that area. You'll see the AP/ECE growth. You'll also see in the beginning, we really started to branch out in our technology education offerings at the high school, and more recently, we're starting to build that business pathway for our students. And then you'll also notice that in 2015, 16 is when we started to phase out the academic level, and we did that over time, phasing that in and out. So these are the courses that have been approved on top of others that were approved prior to 2013. And when we run the registration each year, the high school decides what courses from listing and the other courses that have been approved to put into the Course of Studies. So when they're added to the Course of Studies, it's really to see what are students interested in, what do they want to take? If it's in the Course of Studies, it doesn't mean that it's automatically going to run. We have courses that do not meet the enrollment level that we can run them. So for example, last year, there were 28 courses that didn't run because the enrollments were too low on 26 of them, and then there were two courses that had enough students to run the course, but we didn't have enough staffing within that department. So we talked to the department about which courses do you want to run, and then sometimes we alternate some of these electives on alternate years for students. So that's a decision each year as to what courses to run based on enrollment, interest, and staffing. So the committee just asked that we share this document to the full board because they thought it was helpful to see everything on a couple of pages.
I have a question about, can we, is this, can we ask questions about this document right now?
Josh, you can.
Sorry, now they really work. So it looks like we're adding Chinese every year. How many teachers are we up to if we fulfill this through the 18, 19 year in grade six?
We look 112 because we'll look at staffing for the Chinese. We will need a minimum of four, possibly five, teachers for next year. This year, we currently have five, but we may be able to do it with four teachers next year, and we're having those conversations at this point in terms of staffing internally and also with the Confucius Institute.
So between four and five?
Between four and five, five max.
And in grade six, how many students are taking Chinese? Is that an elective course in grade six, or are they all the children?
It will be all students, and then it becomes an elective in seventh grade, Chinese, Spanish, or French.
Thank you.
Hey, Laura? So I just had a couple of quick questions. One with the Chinese. If my memory serves, it was roughly $90,000 for three teachers. Is there any financial impact to adding these?
Well, it's an additional $30,000 per teacher that we bring on, but for next year's budget, we would maintain the current staffing we have and budget commitment, or we may reduce that if we can do the scheduling with four.
And how are these courses being evaluated?
It is done through the Confucius Institute, but we are working with the institute now that we've gotten most of our curriculums in place to work together to put them in the same format as our district. But the teachers of those courses are evaluated the same way all of our certified staff are also evaluated, because they are certified teachers in Connecticut, the Chinese teachers. So they're held to the same standard as all of our certified staff. We just consider them our staff, which in essence they are.
And with all of the 22 and a half FTEs that we cut, has there been any impact to your ability to offer the courses that you want to everybody?
We've been able to offer what we'd like. I mean, people will always say we can offer more. Last year with the staffing, there were only two courses that did not run. One was graphic design, one was astronomy. But years prior, we also had courses that we didn't run that could have run with staffing. So there wasn't a direct impact with that cut in terms of staffing the classes this
Jay?
Similar to my last question, for the EC statistics that's listed here, is that one that is in conjunction with an AP statistics, or is that supposed to be separate also?
If it was in conjunction with it, would be ECE slash AP or AP slash ECE.
Okay, so in the Course of Studies, I believe it's AP slash ECE, and then this document is just EC. So the same with the calculus and statistics, I'm not understanding what we're offering because it doesn't match up in the Course of Studies.
I'll have to check that tomorrow. I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
This evening without looking at the other document.
Any other board members have questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone opposed to getting our student report now that we have a pair here with us?
No, that'd be great.
So we have your minds updating us.
Sorry about my turkeys. So first, we would like to start off by congratulating some of our sports teams who made it to the championship this year. So first, we have basketball. On Sunday, they went to the Canadian Sun and played against Waterford in their championship basketball game. Unfortunately, they didn't win, but it was a good game to watch. Our hockey team became the state championship, went to the state championship this year and won, so we have that under our belt. And also, we would like to congratulate the swimming team. They, I know people went to the championship and beat their team records and did some amazing things I heard about. So those are our sports teams that have done good this year and made it to the championship. So we're seeing some advancement there. As they tease, are tomorrow, if there is no delay or course closing. And then just one more thing. On March 14, students exercised a walkout in which they had students talk about experiences here, and experiences that they had with COVID-19 lockdowns. And it was really amazing event to see students joining together to speak out and use their voice. And between that time, we had our school campus locked down from 9:30 to 10:30. And one more thing, this is not in our student report, but I think that I've heard a lot of students talk about their capstone and how that is working. And I think that since we, the board approved the capstone a couple, you know, a while ago, I think that it would be good, if, I don't know how it works, but if we could have the directors of the capstone give you a report on what has worked with the capstone and what hasn't worked, so that we could better fix it for our upcoming seniors and seniors to come and access it.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate very much. I'm also glad you can be here. Does anyone have any questions for her here? So now we'll move on to our committee and liaison reports. Jackie, would you like to speak about the Curriculum and Professional Practices?
Yes, we had a really great meeting. Mr. Kelling and Mr. Kimball from the middle school and the high school were present to talk about what they were, sorry, forgive me, to talk about what, things that they were working with together. We were, the committee was really interested in hearing the two principals are working together specifically in discipline and trying to come up with some really appropriately responsive reactions to those kinds of things. I think we've been talking about that a lot, about having a supportive community around discipline. They've had some wonderful speakers in. Let's see. And then we really got into the advanced placement, early college experience discussion that I thought was very, very helpful. It was kind of an add-on to what we'd had earlier the week before here. We talked about the additions with Donna, which I think we're going to discuss further. And that's it. It was a really positive meeting. I think we have some questions about some of the things that are moving forward, and I think it was a positive meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jackie? Thank you for the update. Jay, would you like to speak to finance?
Sure, thank you. So besides what Heather reported, I just want to add, at our finance segment here, we discussed the photography contract, and it's something that Heather's worked on in order to help with student privacy and also just consolidate some work by different photographers at all the schools. We've had PTOs involved, we had the yearbook, and other organizations hiring different photographers, and it should be consolidated. So it is all under control of the central office. So there was discussion, but that's going to be, it continues, a bid going out again. The RFPs are coming in for that. And the other thing we discussed that was important was the preschool tuition, which is on our new business for tonight. Our next finance committee meeting is April 17, yeah, April 17 at 6 o'clock.
Any questions for Jay?
May I clarify? We just are awaiting on the legal advice about the possibility of putting the bids back out for RFP to ensure that it will follow in line with procedures from the original bid process. And so we're somewhere in the middle of that right now, reviewing specs on the bid.
Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions? All right. Jason, would you like to speak to negotiations?
Sure. We're basically unchanged from where we were last month. We had a meeting on Monday, the 26th, with the security personnel. With any luck, we will hopefully reach an agreement on Monday, but if not, we will stick to it, and that's the only act of negotiation right now.
And because negotiations are confidential, I probably won't encourage questions at this time.
And because negotiations are confidential, probably we'll encourage questions at this time. So you're welcome, Jason.
Super.
All right, Laura, would you like to speak to policy, please?
Sure, we have continued to work on business and non-special operations at our last policy meeting. We're going to be taking a break in April. We've had some excellent input from our interim superintendent. And we are very fortunate to have Dr. Carmella up here with us, who's got, they both have some interesting ideas about how we could go forward procedurally with how we address policy, how often we need, many to have a different kind of strategy than the kind of way things have been going along. So we will be taking a break. And April, our next meeting will be a special meeting on Monday, May 14th at 7:00 PM at the office.
And the reason it's special is just because we had to change the date that was on the calendar?
That is correct.
Any other questions for Laura? All right, thank you. Now the liaison reports. We'll go back to the curriculum and professional development council. Jackie, I have nothing to report from last time because we don't have, we haven't had a meeting since then, and it's already in May. Board representative to the A14 Finance, David, would you like to speak to that?
I have nothing new. Their next meeting is coming Monday.
Thank you very much. And Jason, the Avon Town Council?
Yeah, I was at the meeting on March 1st. There was a, again, like the spirited discussion about the turf field, but there was no action taken. It was really just a lot of public input again and discussion. So no action on that. And then the other item on the agenda that was in our interest was the fund transfer of the $667,000 that we previously voted on and sent to the town council. The council has some questions on that, but ultimately, the town manager had recommended it and it was approved at the meeting. So I believe the board of finance is taking it up. So that was essentially it. And the next meeting is April 5th, which I will be able to attend, so hopefully it's going to be an event.
Is there anyone who would like to raise their hand to attend in Jason's absence? We've worked on that. Any other questions for Jason?
I can probably go.
You can go? Okay, so Laura Young will attend the next town council meeting. Thank you very much. All right, and then Jackie Capital will do the education.
The meeting is tomorrow and unfortunately, they keep landing on these terribly snowy Wednesday. So we'll see, we'll see what happens. And the meetings, once I get the minutes from the last meeting, we'll put them into the record.
Thank you. So nothing to ask on that, so thank you. So now we move on to the chair report. I think I would just like to take advantage of this opportunity to welcome Dr. Bridget Carnavola coming to our district here in a time when we really needed fresh eyes. And we're so grateful to have you. You've been an absolute joy to work with and you've made this process very smooth. I hope you're feeling the same. We're excited to have you sit right between us. It's kind of nice to have you right here with us. It feels even more of a partnership. So I just want the district to feel very confident that we've done a good job in hiring Dr. Carnavola. And she's a real asset to us and has made herself very available. We did have a reception for her last week and it was well attended. Lots of people from the community, staff members, parents. It was really nice to have people come in and meet with her. I was quite impressed with her capacity to keep going, like the Energizer Bunny of sorts. But it really was really a good experience for everyone who came. And I would encourage you to reach out. She will have office hours. I don't know if you want to share any of that. But we are very much looking forward to having you in our district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to your report.
Thank you. First, I'd again like to, thank you, to thank the board of the district for putting on the reception. It was very well attended. I was happy to be able to meet so many people in one place and both from people in the district and from the community. In addition, I've been able to get out and through the schools to some degree. Haven't, especially with this tricky weather, had quite as many full days with schools as I would have liked in the past. Not quite two weeks, but I'm still looking forward to that schedule. In regards to the office hours, we are looking for where the place would be best. One of the things that I've done in the past couple of weeks is to meet the folks at Avon Public Library. I've had a great tour and information session there. That's one place that if possible, I would like to hold the office hours as a place in the community. Another possibility, I will be out at the senior center. We're looking for dates for that. I went and I met with the director of the senior center also last week and familiarized myself with those programs. So I will put it out to the public when you're able to decide on time and place. And again, given the trickiness of this alleged spring weather, I'm glad that I haven't solidified any of those just yet. I'd like to just take a moment because this is the last official meeting, obviously, unless you want to come back. And thank Dr. Jeanne Pattyfoot for the enormous resource that she has been to me during this transition. I don't think I would have recognized how helpful it was to have someone to be here as I transitioned without having Jeanne, in part because the last superintendent role I took on, I did not have the opportunity to have someone there during the transition period and just jumped in with two feet. But starting in the course of the school year in particular, it has made it all more necessary really to have had Jeanne here. So I wanted to thank the board for allowing that, but also Jeanne, who, as I've said more than once, school districts would be much, much easier to run if there were two superintendents all the time. But I have to give that up. I'm on the 27th, unfortunately. But thank you, Jeanne, for all that you have done on my way into the district and since I've gotten here.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. A few pieces of information that, as I understand it, are my standing reports. You'll see on page 25, it's a hiring report. New hires, non-certified staff, resignation and transfer within the district. Our enrollment summary on page 26. As you can see, from March 2018, we are steady with enrollment. Actually, we are up at this point, six students since February. Any questions about either of those before I move on? I wanted to share a school security update tonight based on clearly what is a national conversation, number one. But number two has been a source of conversation since I came to the district for sure. And I know, again, that Dr. Pattyfoot was having before I got here. One of the things I have been able to do, regardless of whether or not there were snow days thankfully, is spend quite a bit of time meeting with our town manager, Brandon, and also with our police chief. As you know, we were able to negotiate bringing back our SRO here to the high school. Trooper O'Neil, he, excuse me, Officer O'Neil, he started on March 15th. And that was a little bit of a transition, getting an office ready for him and some other logistics, but we've done all of that. He has been working closely with our security director, retired trooper, just where my writing slip came from, Jim Connolly, as we are beginning really a full-scale review of all of our safety plans that we already have in place and all procedures related to them. We've had several meetings about that already in district. Both the security director and I, Miles, our operations director and I, Mr. Shaw, has been very involved. And we just want to, number one, look and ensure that everything we have in place, because we have quite a bit in place already, is relevant and that individuals are trained for following all of them as we move forward. Because as you know, procedures change based on changes in staff and so on. And we've had some of that here in the district, again, with bringing back on an SRO that will change the way we handle some of our security. That said, as you know also, prior to my arrival, there was already a conversation with the town to give the district additional funds for capital improvement in the amount of $932,412. And we are implementing security upgrades based on the recommendations of the police department, fire department, and they have been prioritized. And so as I go through this list, this is the priority with which the district is addressing that. And there were some meetings before I came, but there had been at least four since I've been here in the past two weeks regarding this also. So these are in stages and I will come back and continue to update you and as we move forward, most likely, I think it would be relevant if we had a presentation related to security, the parts of security episode, we could share all the confidential plans, but what everyone should know about where we are moving forward. So in the following order, these are the projects that will be funded. Enhanced security for the main entrances at the middle school, Roaring Brook and Thompson Brook. These projects involve ensuring visitors are physically directed into the main office of each building. This includes constructing an entrance foyer and a visitor door at middle school. You'll often hear some of our law enforcement and folks refer to this as a people trap or a man trap. We've got people track, trap for it to be, or 2018 was correct. But we are working on that. They've met with contractors for pricing and we are scheduling a meeting with the building inspector to review the code requirements for that. So that's the status of that project at current. And also, I think I neglected to say, a second people trap at Roaring Brook School also. We are in the very beginning stage of implementing a cyberlock system on all exterior entryways. So this is basically a programmable key fob that you would enter into the building with. And they would be unique to each user when individuals had access to the building and to which buildings, which helps us maintain better security over who enters and exits its building versus whatever keys may be out there and accessible to individuals because they're lost. The system will be identical to the town's. That's also the good news, so we're coordinating there. And that also allows our first responders to have access. We had a meeting with Department of Public Works and the manufacturers rep to discuss the implementation of the locks. The number and the location of the locks has already been determined. And the representative will meet with contractors for a walkthrough and scheduling of work for this summer. It's something that has to wait until the summer because of the kind of work that has to be done. But also because apparently there is a large delay for manufacturers in this process with how many schools and public buildings have been implementing the same sorts of projects. We are also looking to increase the security in the courtyard entrance ways at Roaring Brook. We've got the fire marshal on requirements and still waiting to finalize that. In the meantime, we're contracting, contacting the contractors to look at the project. Installing exterior cameras at all schools to provide 360-degree coverage. The funds are available. As they are available, we will move through installing interior cameras at all schools, beginning here at the high school. And there was a plan from 2013. The police are reviewing that plan for installation of the cameras to make sure that it still makes sense in 2018. For example, there could have been a tree that moved in an area outside that might obstruct a view of a camera. That would no longer be the ideal place to put cameras, small things like that. We are ensuring it won't be an issue before cameras are installed. We will have a meeting with the Department of Public Works and the contractor by the end of March to review these plans again. We're also looking to be installing additional security bolters that pile on sort of concrete in front of all the main entrance doors to protect from oncoming vehicles. Very early on in the stages there, in the process of identifying contractors who would be able to do that. And finally, visitor identification systems for all buildings. Our IT department has purchased a database that stores the data and has identified which computers will run the kiosks. These are where when you come to the school, you have to produce a state-issued photo ID to be run through the kiosk to generate a visitor badge. It runs it against a law enforcement database particularly related to sex offenders. This is the primary reason for it. But also, it gives us a quick way to get a badge that has a picture printed on the badge for the individual. It registers that the person was there, the time that they came, the time they went. And the badge is printed with a kind of ink that voids itself within 12 hours. So it cannot be used again the next day. We are also now still though in the process of identifying the locations exactly so that we can determine which pieces we need in each building. There are other pieces that we are in various stages of discussing. These are the capital parts that are in full swing. And I think most importantly, besides these, is the complete review of the plans. We're all involved in conjunction with both the police department, fire department, and the town. And I think all of us around the table, from the district, from the administrators at central office, and the schools, and then the safety committees in each school, is really one of the most important pieces of moving forward right now. And we are knee-deep in scheduling and holding those meetings.
Thank you. That's a very comprehensive update. We appreciate that. Does anyone have questions for Dr. Carnavola?
And I apologize if you already clarified his or they not know the exact answer. Did 932 have changed as a combination of the 667, whatever had already been on our capital ledger, for security plus the grant?
I know you know the exact dollar amount of grants, so I'll let you speak to it.
Yes, that's correct. So the grant, think about it as something that we'll get after we've already spent the money. So don't even think about it like that. Just think about it as we have the capital that we've got for, for next fiscal year plus what the board is so kind to move forward to, the bodies to transfer from the AMS science project.
I just wanted to put it right there that this was something that the school district had already been going after. It was a work in progress. And I thank you very much for keeping it involved and to Dr. Pattyfoot as well.
Thank you. And Houston, do you have a question?
Couple of comments. I remain unconvinced that cameras are a good idea. I understand that people seem to like them. I think they're a, with all due respect, a feel-good thing. I'd rather have gunshot detectors, particularly with the interior of the buildings, because I think it's cheaper and it's, in light of the discussion for manpower costs for manning the cameras and for the quality and nature of the cameras that you've been talking about, I think it's a waste of money, just letting you know. And we'd had that discussion before, but it was not in the public and not on camera. Then I'd also said that I was going to raise an issue and the chair said she was going to put it on the agenda. So I assume this is where it is on the agenda. So I would make a motion to close the high school as an open campus effective immediately.
Is there a second?
And if that has failed, then I make a motion to close it effective starting the beginning of next academic year.
I believe that's the conversation that's taking place between Dr. Carnavola and building administrators.
I understand, but I said I was going to make the motion and we were going to entertain it in public. So I'm making the motion.
Is there a second to that?
Can I make a comment before I make a second? Do I have to, I have a comment about this discussion.
And I think we need a second to discuss it. And then, you know.
So go ahead, second.
Well, concerned about seconding. I don't feel like we're ready to vote on it. I think we have to have like robust conversation. I think the public really has to be aware. If the board is going to participate in this decision, if this is not a central office and principal and, you know, head of the building discussion, then I just really think the public has to be aware and we should have a discussion.
Should the motion fails?
The motion then fails.
Thank you, Senator. All right, Jeff, you have comments or questions?
I do. First, a quick response to Houston. I have said publicly, at least at a committee meeting, that I'm in favor of the cameras because to talk about school security only in an active shooting situation, we have failed our duty in providing safety for our students. The cameras provide us an opportunity to watch and monitor other. The cameras provide us an opportunity to watch and monitor other security risks, security risks that our students face on a much more regular basis than the horrific events we've seen in the media. But Dr. Carmenola, if you can just address, when you laid out the security plans, thank you for that, made the mention that it was going to be done listed in terms of priority of funding. I noted that the last item regarding the visitor ID, I thought we voted at the last meeting to go ahead and obtain that, is that on hold pending the other five items above it?
Heather, I'll defer to you in a moment, but I want to clarify. This is in priority of the assessment that was done from the AVON Police Department, not priority of funds.
Thank you.
So this is priority they recommended after their fiscal assessment of all of the properties in order of importance, in priority according to their assessment. And did you want to say, add something else to that?
You did vote to fund it this fiscal year and there's P.O. Impulse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could make one comment to Mr. Fleischman, if I might. I have sympathy towards Mr. Fleischman's concerns, however, I would point out that the cameras are not motion sensitive, the cameras are not going to be monitored, they will only playback.
Correct.
So all we get is a rewind.
Correct.
With all due respect, I think that diminishes their value substantially.
So when a student goes missing, we have record to see who the student interacted with, where did the student go? It provides another tool to help solving the issue. Again, there are a list of other problems. When there's a fight at the school, we can see who's directly involved in those fights. Issues of bullying, we can see that. If we hear that there's an intruder in the building, those videos can be retrieved and we can trace down who it was, who they came in contact with, what are the things? We find a suspicious bag or another package or something that can't be accounted for, the cameras can provide that information to us. All these scenarios happen on a much regular basis in our public schools and not having those interior cameras, again, we have failed our students in providing security for them. You will have more use out of those than I think gun detectors.
Can I add to that? Just, I think during the meeting that we had, actually it was right after Parkland when we actually voted to remove the science lab money, the discussion we had about the videos were that they were kind of not just rewind, that there were going to be people watching them in real time. So maybe we need some clarity about what we're really talking about here because, you know, I see your point, Houston, but I really can also understand Jeff's point. And I think the discussion, my recollection of the discussion was that even if we didn't have people watching them directly, sitting there, we do have security personnel here who are watching, you know, they can be looking at the cameras. And I think it was also going to be patched into the police department real time. So I think some of that clarity would be helpful for me. I know that one of the things we heard from Parkland is that there's a 20-minute delay that really, really caused some problems. So we really want to make sure that we're getting what we think, you know, what the police department recommends, but maybe that would be helpful for all of us to understand really what we're talking about, you know, so it's not apples and oranges. Is it real time or is it just a tape delay?
I'd like Dr. Carmenola has response.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions and the commentary because I think there is something to be said on all sides for this discussion. Yes, to start here, the part of the plan is that they will be live said to the police department. Now that said, that does not mean that the police department will have the cameras, the monitors running on time. That would actually be a violation of privacy, student data privacy and perp. But during an instance that they need to see what's happening, they can then use them. That is also-
That's only interior cameras. Exterior cameras, I thought they were going to have available all the time.
I believe that the exterior cameras, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, they fit the same bill, but-
They have a view of them as needed. But again, the situation is being reviewed by our legal counsel to make sure that we are in full compliance.
So one of the pieces that we have to finish before this project can be finished in regards to the police department having access to the cameras, is an agreement that needs to be signed between the district and the police department about when and how they can access the cameras. And that will ensure that we are maintaining the data privacy as required by federal and state law. The other piece, and this is something that town manager and the chief and I have already spoken a couple of times about, is that there's other operational issues to consider putting the cameras in and the monitoring of it even by the police department. There are building blueprints that have to be accurately labeled alongside of cameras, for example, that both the police officers and the building administrators understand. If we are talking about, you know, for example, red team, you know, room B, we would understand what that meant in the school district. That's not necessarily how the police would understand it moving in where they are getting instructions from dispatch. So there's still quite a bit of conversation that has to happen as this goes on for us to sort through those operational pieces. The good news is, we know that and that conversation has begun. To both Jeff, Jeffrey and Houston's point, I agree on both sides. I think they do increase security for many reasons, some of which Mr. Fleischman already noted. And on the flip side, for cameras to be most effective, they are monitored more often, which often requires personnel to monitor the cameras. At present, we do have individuals here at the high school that we could assign to do that. There will be monitors in all of the main offices that the administrators and secretaries can see, but as far as designating that a person is monitoring all of the cameras at all times at school succession, that is not where we are at this point. If that is something that we are going to talk about moving forward, that obviously would be something to consider from a staffing perspective. But that said, having the cameras, even without one designated person watching them all the time, will be helpful even to securities and secretaries and administrators as they can look out and see who's coming into the building, for example. Stopping people within the quote people traps if they deem necessary. Sometimes, for example, with a picture of someone who has been barred from school grounds that they can now see before they are actually into the office based on the camera and having that extra barrier of the foyer. And most importantly, from the flip side of it, that police can see inside of the buildings in an active shooter or in other tragic or sensitive school emergency.
Just in terms of technology, my cameras tell me anytime a person shows up, they email me, they text me, it's a pain in the ass, I usually turn it off. So you don't actually need a person, but clearly the police department was unaware of this technology when we quizzed them about it. And at the risk of giving out numbers, there are 275 cameras that we're talking about. Sorry, it's not going to happen. It's only going to be rewind, so it's not going to be helpful. And, well, anyway, but we each have our opinions and that's, we make decisions and we move on.
All right, Houston, thank you. Laura?
My understanding was that the decision, the idea of putting in the cameras was based on best practices and not just on somebody's opinion in law enforcement and that they were being used all over the state, not just to prevent the kind of terrible tragedy that occurred in Florida, but for all the reasons that Jeffrey has explained, that on a daily basis, schools are faced with. And I understand that, I also did talk about a share Houston's concern from the standpoint of who is monitoring them and that it's not just for that one type of incident. It is something that we should understand though, so hopefully that will be part of the design and we will continue to take it forward. But it is best practices to have the cameras in place, correct?
Correct, it is the recommendation of the police department.
This is recommendation of the police department, but I'm not sure it's best practices unless we know who's saying it's a best practice.
Any board members who have it still?
Oh, I have one more question if we could.
Okay, Jackie.
Sorry. You said summer is when you'll be prioritizing these. What are we thinking these things would really happen in real time, real life? Like when would those people stuff things really be, people trap, what are we really thinking of those will be viable kind of things?
There are two issues there. One, they have to be designed to meet code requirements. And one of the conversations that we just had about that was to ensure that from engineering perspective and so on, they were sound. So there's that piece from the drawing. It's already close to the end of March, so that's one piece. Scheduling and, so there are some of the schools clearly where if we're disrupting the main entrance to that degree, we might have a logistical problem with students and parents coming in and out. And so generally speaking, I would say we hope those would all be completed by the end of the summer because they have to take advantage of-
So beginning of the school year, by next year.
That's our hope moving forward is that it's great. We're at the beginning part of that plan for the side off on the town.
Thank you.
Any other board members? And I'd like to finish by saying that I'm very grateful for the work you're doing in conjunction with the police department and the fire department. I think that it's crucial to get all the right players at the table for this discussion and that we do this with fidelity and integrity, so thank you very much for that. Is there anything else after Carmenola?
No, thank you very much.
Now moving on to the consent calendar, the only thing we have is approval of budget transfers. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove from the consent calendar?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, so Houston approved, Jenny seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions? Okay, moved. Now on to new business. I believe we have Dr. Zack talking again about the AVON High School New Course recommendation.
Another item on the CPDC agenda was the course, which is an Algebra II skills course. It did meet the requirement of the two-thirds vote, moved forward, and we did present it the other evening in the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee. This particular course is a skills course that will support students that are enrolled in Algebra II. So the students will take Algebra II and in addition to that, they will be enrolled in a skills course which runs what we call the skinny block, 45 minutes and not a full block. It is a credit bearing course and this is a continuation in a sequence. So we already have an Algebra I skills course, a geometry skills course, and this would be the Algebra II skills course within that sequence. This course is not for that open enrollment like I talked about earlier. This course is really for students that need specific skill development because of gaps in instruction or learning. So our first approach always is to fill those gaps within the classroom, either through, you know, working independently with the teacher after class, through differentiation. If that's not working, then we kind of move up to that next level of having the students work with our tutors. Here at the high school, we have peer tutors also that work with students. But we do have a small handful of students that really need that intensive support. And there are actually, you know, curriculum that go with this course. It's the core curriculum pulled out of the Algebra II course where it builds those skills that are gaps along the way. We did have quite the discussion the other evening about the title of the course, you know, the skills and what that looked like. So I spoke with the director of guidance here at the high school because he has a network of other directors in A and B DIRGs, sent out an email asking other schools what they titled that course if they happened to have that particular course. We got about a dozen responses back. Some people called it Math Center, we've got a math workshop, a math lab, a learning center algebra, so it's kind of all over the place in that skills development area. Because we're also required, when we put in courses that we award credit for, that they are aligned with state codes and meet also the requirements that are listed in the state code. So for this particular course, if you're running a course that has, is building on a core course, then a supplemental course or a skills course or a workshop or something like that. In speaking with the director of counseling and the high school, it is felt that skills would be the best title for the course, as I told the committee I would get back to them, because of the fact that we've already been running an Algebra I and a geometry skills course. So if somebody looked at the transcript and a student happened to take those three courses, we'd have two titles and then a completely different title. And we need to be very transparent, we feel, on the transcripts of what colleges are seeing. So we don't want to have a different title just kind of hanging out there. So I put the course forward, we'll answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions? Jay?
So first, I don't remember us approving the Algebra I skills or Geometry skills. I don't know, did that come before the board?
That did not come before the curriculum council or the board.
And I'm just wondering, are we in a position to have to have these classes as a result of the collapsing of levels? Is that, or why do we now need these courses within our high school?
These are courses that we need really to support, as I said, a handful of students that, you know, struggle with the skills. It could be students that are new to the district, they could be students that just struggled, you know, with us moving the Algebra I down to the eighth grade. So we have looked at that and if you recall, in January, we split that Algebra course for about 28 students into an Algebra I, A that they take in eighth grade and Algebra I being ninth grade because we had a number of students repeating. So our goal really is to eliminate the skills course over time by, you know, strengthening those interventions and we're hoping the dividing of this course is, you know, something that will allow students to really have a strong conceptual understanding of the Algebra course so that we don't need these skills courses over time.
So you anticipate this being phased up? I guess my question is, how are those students being served today if we don't have that course in place?
In the Algebra II course?
Yes.
We don't have it in place and it's, you know, they're going to the math lab, they're working with teachers, so we're feeling it's being successful in Algebra I, in geometry. So we feel that we need to put that support in place for the students that are coming up for next year. The same way we split the Algebra course to try to support all the students as we saw the need.
Right. And my last point is just, I mean, I understand wanting to have the consistency on the transcript, but I heard from others the concern that when the skills title is on the transcript, it may affect a way admission person is looking at that transcript for those students. So I don't know if there's a way for us to transition to where's it maybe better? I know we're phasing it out, but if there's a way to help those students applying to college and, I don't know, to me, I was thinking lab sounds better, that was one that you offered, or even I've seen practicum as something that, as a word that's used for an additional course in that same subject.
The lab is more of a course that helps students do the work. This is actually a curriculum taught course that teaches the core curriculum. So when the admissions reads that description up here is, you know, Algebra II course and the skills course, it's very closely aligned where math lab is not that tightly aligned. I think the other piece that we have to keep in mind too is as we keep changing things on the transcript, you know, last year we moved back to the semesters instead of the year-long courses. So we have students now that are going to be running under two GPAs when we go out to a college, you know, for the next couple of years because of that shift in our policy. And then if we start changing, you know, skills, we're going to have kids with two years of skills on it and then something else. So I think it really starts making our transcripts more confusing, that's just my opinion, if we keep trying to change things. The other piece too with the skills courses, I did have this conversation with the counselors and, you know, having worked in other districts where that is, and I also worked at the University of Hartford in the registrar's office prior to going into public education, you know, we looked really at what are those courses that students are taking and sometimes supports were put in place for kids where we saw that they needed that little bit of extra support as they came into the University of Hartford so that they would be successful. My concern too is if we keep trying to kind of sugarcoat, in my words, these titles so it doesn't really look like what it is, are we putting a handful of students at a disadvantage of getting those supports they potentially need when they go to college?
Thank you.
Hey Laura?
I have a number of questions. Can you tell us exactly how many? Is it a small sample?
It ranges between 20 and 30 students.
Per semester or a year?
Over the course of the year, it's a year long course. You know, unless the student fills those gaps and they can transition out, but most of them tend to be in for the full year.
So when I first saw this, it was for me kind of a red flag because we talked about, you know, with EASK- you know, with NEAS, I think recommended that we get rid of our academic level. There's a concern here that we're creating another skills course. Are we doing this for all? You know, for English II and for science? It seems like we're adding more and more skills courses.
It's just for this course and in math?
Right now. But I'm saying, this is right now in this moment, but are we going to start needing to do this in our other courses as well? And what is the problem? Are students not able to keep pace at the other, any other classes? It concerns me that we might be ending up with a group of students who could be, if they were given enough support in another way, maybe taking other classes. I just, this is a concern.
The students that are taking this course, the important thing to understand is that they are taking Algebra II, the full course, in addition to this. When we had the academic level, that was the course that they were taking, was an academic level course. So, this course supports the CP course. It's also what I call the skinny block, where it's a 45-minute block, not the entire block, so that students, you know, can butt it up with a study hall, because most of our students do have a study hall block. So, it provides that opportunity for them to still have the study hall and not lose the entire block and get the electives that they also need. In terms of putting it in place in other courses, we're not seeing the foundational skill gap. With math, if you don't have those foundational skills, it's hard to build. Where we can close those gaps in other ways and within the classrooms for English, social studies, and the other courses.
Laura, you have something?
I don't know. Thank you.
My question was just answered. Thank you.
Just want to offer another perspective.
Thank you, David.
Another perspective on this, I think, just wanted to recognize the administration for providing what looks like a solution for a need in our student body. So, I think
that's an important thing to kind of think a lot more broadly too.
Jackie?
Yes, I wanted to thank you guys too. I got to see how this worked and how you guys really kind of fettered it out with all the teachers in that CPDC. I thought that was a really kind of holistic approach. And I think these comments are really weighty and really important. The comments that the respondents made about how we could maybe start these supports at, you know, younger ages, that really kind of spoke to me. I guess my concern is, I'm grateful for this class. I think it obviously helps those 25 students, and it's obviously working, it sounds like, in the other two skills classes. I have serious concerns about it showing up on a transcript. And I guess when we say, you know, should we really be sugarcoating things because we don't want to be giving away, you know, we don't want to make it look like our transcript isn't really reflecting the coursework that the student did. I don't, that doesn't really speak to me in the way that, you know, we're phasing this course out, right? That's the goal, is to phase this course out?
That is the goal, that we provide students with those supports and skills earlier. We have the supports in place, but again, you know, we see a need that we want to help the students that have that need, that particular need.
So, I have the same concerns that I have had about all of these courses. I'm concerned about them going on a transcript. I'm very concerned about what they kind of, they feel like red flags to me for certain students. I'm really concerned for these other schools. I don't think they should be putting Learning Center on their transcripts or Math Lab either. I'm surprised that they're giving credit for that. So, for me, I guess it's just that struggle. I appreciate so much the work that you guys are doing, and I know that the students certainly need that support. But for things that we're trying to kind of correct on our end, it's hard for me to, I wish there was another answer. I wish there was another way to kind of get these things, get the support for the students in a different way. I also feel kind of awkward about voting on one but not having kind of vetted or voted on the other two. It feels a little bit inconsistent to me. And I agree with you about our transcripts. I think we want them to be readable and to make sense, and we shouldn't be changing things all the time. But those are some of the concerns that I have about, about this. I support the content and the idea. I would have some real concerns about kind of what the demographics of this class look like going forward, make sure it, you know, that we're not kind of getting into too heavy of the 504 IEP kind of stuff. So, those are the questions that I would have before I was really comfortable with.
The proportions of those groups are not, they're equally balanced going across. They're not, you know, really identifiable subgroup, class, as we were experiencing with our academic course.
So, like in the skills classes we have now, those are?
They're a mix of students across the board.
Meaning, like, under 50%?
General ed, special ed, you know, 504 students. So, it's really based on the need of the student and not, you know, this is a course for students that are, you know, have an IEP or a 504 plan.
So, is it 50/50, or is it more?
I can't say exact numbers. I mean, I could get those for you, but when we just put the Algebra I A course in at the middle school, you know, we had the discussion that we wouldn't be putting it in if it, you know, really became a group of, you know, our special ed students, 504. And it was a little bit over 50% of general ed students that needed those supports.
So, it might be around 50/50, the split, general ed versus 504 and IEP?
I really have to go look at the numbers, Jack. I don't want to say yes, it definitely is.
Thank you.
Now, I have some questions. I do think it's important to remember that it's very possible that not all of our students are college-bound. When we had that phenomenal presentation of internships last month, there was one woman in particular who made, we're talking to her, her plan was not college. And I always thought that the opportunity we gave them of that internship was us doing what we need to prepare her for her next step. And I think that should be the goal. So, while I understand your concern about how colleges will look at, we're talking about such a small population, we may want to acknowledge that either A, this population may not be looking necessarily at college on, and that we still have to ensure that they get the supports they need to be successful with our curriculum. The other thing to acknowledge is that different colleges have different expectations and different standards. And while Yale may turn down a student that they perceive as needs some additional supports, a University of Hartford where I went to school sees that as a strength, that the student with the supports were able to overcome, work harder than the other students to meet a level of success. I am fearful anytime we give students a course and say, do this, but we're not going to put it on your transcript, we tell the students that they should be embarrassed and ashamed that they need the additional supports. And I think that's not right. I think if we provide this opportunity for students, one, we should reward them by giving them credit and let them know that there's nothing to be ashamed and embarrassed of. And I think that has gotten lost in this conversation. This is, pointed out, a temporary solution because we realize there are students struggling, which is what we did the responsible thing by providing supports at a lower level to catch it. This is targeted to a group that is now in our school system, that missed the opportunity to have those supports. And it's just ensuring that they can get the supports they need.
I just, I have to respond because he kind of said I was making, I certainly have-
It wasn't a personal attack on you.
It kind of felt like it, but I certainly have great respect, obviously, for students seeking out any kind of skill support. My own children have benefited greatly from those things. So, it's really not that. It's kind of what our responsibility is also to these students. And I think that, you know, whatever they decide to do that day after graduation, really, it's our job to prepare them and to really do the best that we can to provide as many options as we can for them. So, so that's where I feel a little bit, a little bit stuck and a little bit concerned about, about just kind of naming these things, when I think that sometimes the students might be able to get what they need in other places. Or if we're, if we are kind of winding these down, what's the timeline and how is that really going to look? Because even when we wind them down, we want those children to be able to access supports they need, right, at any level, I would think.
Any board members who haven't spoken yet?
I'll move the, I'll move to approve it. Move to approve the Algebra II skills. Proposal by administration.
I'd have David raise his hands.
That's okay. I'll defer to Houston's motion.
Laura, have another comment?
I guess I would be interested in knowing what the timeline is for this, how many years we're talking about. It is temporary, right?
So, we're talking- The goal is to phase it out. And, you know, we have just put the new course in eighth grade, so that would be the course coming up through that we hopefully will phase out by the time they move up through.
And how is this going to be perceived as we are now in the process of being voted out and our NEAS call up?
I think it will be perceived fine, because we have a small group of students that need supports, and we're putting those supports in place. The major concern of NEAS was that we had a whole level of classes, you know, that were pretty much subgroup identifiable, where this is a support for students and not a class of core academic area.
I'm here.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to throw in some student perspective about this. So, I think Algebra II. So, the problem that I've seen is that if students can't keep up with the class of Algebra II or need some assistance, what happens is the teacher drops them down to integrated introduction to Algebra, so they relearn the Algebra skills, so that they next year take Algebra II again. So, the student already taking Algebra II gets dropped down, and they have to take Algebra II again. So, I think that this will help only because then the student doesn't drop down. What they get is that support that they need so that they can keep up with the class. Maybe they can keep up with the class, and maybe they miss a day of school. I don't know how something happened. And the only concern that I had was that the, so it's like, as students who are struggling in the class, how do we, how do you identify students who are struggling? So, if I get F on one particular section of Algebra II, does that mean I need the support then? Or I don't know how that would be tracked about, like, how, what students are actually put in? Like, how do you determine that? Is it like, I don't know, it's not something for you to figure out. But, and also, I just think that we're overthinking it a little, just a little bit, I don't know, in this student perspective, is that I think that it's simply kind of just to, in my opinion, help the students. I think a lot of times at this school district, that what we do is, we want to drop everything. So, in eighth grade, you do take Algebra I now. And the question was proposed, like, okay, well, why do we see this gap? Why do we see students struggling? I think that really, the reason we see students struggling is because what we're trying to do is drop everything down so that fortunately, when students get into freshman year, we want them to take in 18 ECE classes because we've dropped everything down. We made the standard of taking Algebra I in freshman year. We were trying to drop it down to eighth grade, and, you know, maybe sooner or later, we dropped it down to seventh grade. We're trying to always be ahead of the game, and we're always thinking about those students who need support. So, I think that this is one way. Being phased out, I think, you know, sooner or later could be good. But I think that really, if we're trying to, we're always talking, we're always talking AP, ECE classes a lot of times, and we always forget of the students who need that support. We really did. We always forget of them who needs support. We're always trying to make everyone high achieving, and how would appeal to colleges. And everyone, like he said, may not be college-bound, but I think that college at this point is not even a big factor. I think that maybe in the class is a big factor. First of all, before you think about college or how would it come college strangely, okay, that's just one thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Dr. Colonel?
Point of order, does my motion fail due to lack of a second?
I'll second the motion.
Dr. Colonel, would you have a minute?
I don't know, because I'm going to interrupt the rules of order. I have a question. It's fine. Keep moving.
Then, all in favor of passing the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Just one is one extension. If you pressed passes, would you like to ask a question?
Emir asked a question inherent that I thought would involve it more, I'll have to answer, about how students get into this course.
So, through this course, as I mentioned earlier, it starts with the classroom supports. And we're always looking at, you know, obviously, the assessment, student performance, and then we move it up to, you know, the tutor support through our student assistance team and SRBI model. So, we're collecting data. So, in the SRBI model, we're modeling, we're progress monitoring students' growth and closing those gaps. When we don't see that closing there, based on teacher recommendation, assessments, state assessments, those are the criteria that we use to then ultimately move a student up to that level of support.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. All right, so that motion passed. We're on to preschool tuition. Miss Sean?
Thank you. So, through background, we now can't do the memo on these courses. Next year's budget, the Department of Education has put forth, in addition, to grow our preschool program just a bit. So, they're looking at the three-year-old program to move from a three-day-a-week program to a five-day-a-week program, still maintaining a half-day session for that particular program. So, what this is asking to do is increase the per diem, because we are assessing peer families' tuition. So, right now, the per diem was based on a three-day-a-week program. We're asking to collect for a five-day, half-day program. So, we're not increasing the percentage on the tuition for the four-year-old program. We're not increasing the per diem percentage for the three-year-old program, but instead, we're capturing 180 days versus 108, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Heather was kind enough to actually type up a motion. Is there anyone that would like to read the motion into the record?
So moved. I'll ask the secretary to spread it upon the minutes.
Let's read it. Motion to increase preschool tuition for the three-year-old program from $1,670 to $2,783 per fiscal year 2018-2019. This tuition adjustment is contingent upon the 2018-2019 budget passing, which includes increasing the preschool three-year-old program from three half-days per week to five half-days per week. Can I have a second?
Second.
Jump seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? So, passes unanimously. Now, we have communications from Avon board members. Jackie, do you have something?
I actually have two quick points. First, a couple weeks ago, I had the honor of attending local Cub Scout packs, and it was long-gold dinner. One, it was great to see students from first grade all the way up to our high school be involved, and really it was nice watching the older students. Really served as role models for younger students. In particular, I want to acknowledge Principal Rankowitz for his attendance and his speech. I think it's always tremendous when one of our staff takes time out of their personal lives to attend an out-of-school activity, to show support and encouragement for our students. So, I just want to acknowledge his presence. And as a parent of a Cub Scout, thank you for your insight and your attendance. On a second comment unrelated, Houston did make a motion regarding the open campus, and I, I'm in support of the idea of, sorry, closing the campus, the high school. But I also agree with Jackie, there needs to be a much more robust conversation. In particular, I would like to see a conversation with building administration, get their input before we as a body take any action. Thank you.
Any other board members?
I think, to that point, I think we need to be like told that this is really our purview or not. I think many of us are interested in closing the campus, and we can probably act when we know that it's the, you know, the role, that it's our role. But one thing that had, we had talked about in the school climate committee a couple, probably about half a year ago back, was really focusing, thank you, on the minority recruitment of teachers. And I know that there's some events coming up in March that CREF does, but maybe we could just start, you know, kind of possibly if we have a human resources person coming in, we can really start kind of having some of those discussions as we go through the process for next year with that person. So, I just wanted to kind of mention that.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Any other board members?
Just a quick, I think echo what Jeffrey said about the open-close campus debate, and I think really fairness to everyone. Not only do we need to have a bigger conversation about it, but it needs to be on the agenda as a noticed item. So, and I'm sure people are going to show up, you're going to express their opinions. You know, it's one of these issues that people care about, and I think we need to not only hear from the administration and the thoughts of the nine of us, but there's going to be public interest in that as well, so I think, if they can, fairness, that's what we can take it up. But hopefully sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now we have a second opportunity for communications from the public, for those of you that have stayed with us this entire time. Is there anyone that would like to come and speak? All right, thank you. We do have a motion to enter into executive session. I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss pending litigation of Doe et al. versus Mastoloni et al., and to invite into the session Dr. Bridget Heston-Parnamola, Superintendent, Dr. Donna Nessel-Rusak, Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Heather Machad, Director of Fiscal Affairs, Dr. Jeanne Paddyfoot, Transition Administrator, and Attorney Joanna Zelman.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?